The Planning Board's Committee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. I'd like to start tonight's session by acknowledging the committee members present with us this evening. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hafford?
Aye.
Ms. Penaro? Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman? Mr. Heinel? Mr. Pirlo? Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Caligari?
Aye.
Mr. Fotus? Mr. Ari?
Aye.
And Ms. German? Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear presentations from the Baltimore County Public Schools and the community colleges of Baltimore County. After the presentations, members of the committee will have an opportunity to ask questions of the presenters. I note that there are members of the community in attendance tonight. This meeting has not been designed to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October 21st of last year, which was the opportunity for the board to hear from citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement budget. If they are ready, I would now like to invite Dr. Darryl Williams from Baltimore County Public Schools to begin his presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, especially to the members of the board and Chair Scott Halupka. My name is Darryl Williams, the Superintendent of Baltimore County Public Schools. I'm here to present our capital improvement plan for FY 2023. With me today are my team members, Mr. Pete Dixit, the Executive Director, the Department of Facilities Management and Strategic Planning, Mr. Merrill Plait, Director of Facilities Construction and Improvement, and Mr. Paul Taylor, Director of Strategic Planning. I would also like to thank you and the members of the Planning Department for supporting our capital improvement programs in the past. Our priorities continue to be the completion of schools included in schools for our future program, recommendations on the high school program from the Multi-Year Improvement Plan for All Schools, or MYIPAS, and the infrastructure improvements. It is my understanding that the board has already received a detailed presentation on MYIPAS. Our school system is continuing to move forward in creating equitable learning environments that will result in globally competitive graduates. Our curriculum and instructional elements are developed not only to challenge and engage our students, but also to afford the opportunity for learning to take place in buildings designed to meet modern educational standards along with building and operating efficiency. So with that, I invite Mr. Pete Dixit and his team to present the information. Mr. Dixit?
Good evening. I'm trying to turn my camera on. I don't know if you can see me or not.
How are you doing?
Thank you. Thank you. So I don't know if the presentation is going to be in front of you. I was hoping that somebody is going to be projecting it, so.
I'll project it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tracy, and good evening again, Chair Halupka, members of the Planning Board. My name is Pete Dixit. I'm Director, Executive Director of Facility Management and Strategic Planning. Next slide, please. So our pathway, our capital effort is for part of the compass, our pathway to excellence, and it is particularly focused area five, which is operational excellence. And under that, the key initiative is improving school facilities system-wide and maintain a school in state of good repair. Next slide, please. As you'll recall from last year, Baltimore County Public Schools and Baltimore County embarked on a $1.6 billion capital program known as School for Our Future in 2011, a bold and proactive plan to address our capital need. As part of that program, air conditioning initiative was the prominent upfront item. And all of the schools have been air-conditioned. In a timeframe of about nine years, we completed 90 schools, and all of them are air-conditioned. The last year's priorities that you saw, the top four priorities, and we'll come to that once the spreadsheet is here, they have been funded, so they have been taken out of this spreadsheet. The funding came from Build to Learn Act. The next slide, please, is, I'll share with you the schedule. April 2020, Baltimore County and Baltimore County Public School began on MYIPAS, Multi-Year Improvement Plan for All Schools. In the fall of 2020, Phase One of High School Recommendations was shared with the board. The summer 2021, Phase Two Elementary and Middle School Recommendations have been shared with the board. And in the spring of 2020, 2022, final recommendations for all schools are anticipated. It is my understanding that MYIPAS presentations have already been made to Planning Board at least two times. So next slide, please. This is an inventory of our schools. We have a total number of 175 schools, which is 107 elementary school, 26 middle, 24 high schools. One school falls in the category of other, which is grades four through eight. Special education schools are four, and there are centers and programs and one charter school. Next slide, please. As stated earlier, the top four priorities that we had in last year's presentation that we made to you, they are, they were already funded, and the four priorities here, Deer Park, Scott's Branch, Lansdowne, and Dundalk High Addition, they are the carryovers from previous year. The top three being replacement school and Dundalk High being in addition to the Dundalk High School. Northeast area, new addition renovation, five priorities, five through eight and 11 through 14 are from last year's CIP, while nine and 10 are recommendations from MYIPAS. Just want to talk a little bit about it. These recommendations are to go deeper into the study of capacity and options that we can come up with to solve the capacity problems in northeast area and southeast area. The study has just started, and we are hoping that we'll come up with options that has a general consensus from from the county, from our fiscal authorities, and among the community members. Priority 1112 is Towson High School Replacement, and 1314 is Delaney High School. As you will recall, our board had approved replacement of both of those schools. And recently, a county executive has supported funding for those schools, and they are under review by IAC. Priority 15 is a request to explore a career technology education center in the northeast area, and that study is going to be underway in near future. Next slide, please. Priorities 16 through 26 are systemic projects. They are in need of improvement. They have exceeded their life expectancy. And the same thing is true for the next two slides. Next slide, please. And the next one. Most of these projects are for roof replacement, old chiller replacement, and we have inventory of old systems, and we are gradually trying to replace them. Next slide, please. So what we presented to you last year, these were the projects that were included in last year's presentation, and all of them have been fully funded, the top two from the capital funds, and the next four from Built to Learn Act funds. So very soon, we'll be reaping the benefit of all the work that has been done to get the Build to Learn Act passed. And the systemic projects that were fully funded, they have been removed. Next slide, please. As I shared with you earlier, these are the three studies that we'll be conducting over period of next several months, and we hope to get recommendations out of those studies, and they will be added in future requests. Those systemic projects that were not funded in previously, previously, they have been requested again. Next slide, please. This is a picture or a graph of the enrollment projections. As due to the COVID pandemic, PCPS, similar to other school system, experienced unusual trends of lower than projected enrollment, primarily at the elementary school level. The projected enrollment for September 2020 at 116,610, and actual enrollment was 111,120, which is 5,069 below projected and 3,918 below 2019 enrollment projection. This is prior to COVID-19. Elementary enrollment was impacted significantly by the COVID pandemic, decreasing by 3,909 students. While the middle school enrollment decreased by 610, high school enrollment has continued to increase throughout the pandemic, adding 1,051 students since 2019. Projected enrollment for 2020 is 116,189, and what the experts are telling us that gradually the trend will come back to normal. Next slide, please. So this captures what I just indicated. We have been talking to our consultant Sage Policy Group, and they use their best judgment to account for the current and future impact on enrollment by pandemic. And what their statement is that many students will eventually return upon resolution of the current pandemic. Next slide, please. So this is, this graph here shows you a lot of green, yellow, and orange color, and it shows percent utilization for 2020. Orange, red, burgundy shows overcrowded area, which is above 115%. Yellow over capacity of 100 to 115%, and green and blue under capacity, less than 100%. Next slide, please. The left side of the map is elementary schools before CIP, the CIP that we are presenting to you before. And the right one shows after the CIP projects have been completed. As you will see, capacity relief is provided to elementary schools in the northeast area, south of Route One, as a result of added capacity from the new northeast elementary school and expansion of Red House Run Elementary School. Also, you'll see the relief will be provided to Northwest Elementary School following the completion of four projects in Northwest area. MYIPAS will address outstanding areas that are still in non-green colors here. Next slide, please. This is the similar map for middle schools. Left map shows projected utilization for 2728, right is post-CIP. It starts with two middle schools over 115%. Post-CIP middle schools relieved. MYIPAS will address outstanding area. Before CIP, schools in Orange, Dumbarton, and Perry Hall Middle Schools. Post-CIP projects is New Northeast and Pine Grove Middle School. Next slide, please. Here is similar map for for high schools. And as you'll see, left map shows projected utilization for 278. Right is the post-CIP. Start with three high schools over 130%. Towson, Dundalk, and Sparrows Point, and one high school over 115% that's Parkville High School. Post-CIP relief provided to Central, Southwest, Katonville Lansdowne area, and Dundalk High School in Southeast. And as I indicated before, for the MYIPAS recommendations, two studies are currently underway to evaluate additional relief options for northeast and southeast area. We anticipate these studies will be completed in late spring or early summer, and after we'll be able to share with everyone the recommendations that came out of those studies. Next slide, please. So this one is showing by area, so southwest area at 2020, over 100% utilization in elementary schools. Relief provided with opening of new Lansdowne and Chadwick Elementary Schools and secondary schools, Katonville Middle and High School exceed 100%. Next slide, please. Southwest area, 2023 CIP request that is in front of you is replacement school, which is Lansdowne High School, and systemic renovation, which is Southwest Academy Roof Replacement. Next slide, please. For the Northwest area, 2020, over 100% utilization. Elementary school, 10 of the 21 schools exceeded 100%. Secondary school, Deer Park Middle School exceeded 100%. Next slide, please. So Northwest area, CIP request for 2020 that is in front of you. Replacement in schools included is Deer Park Elementary School and Scott's Branch Elementary School. Also, the planning study that's underway for a possible CTE center in the Northwest area. Systemic renovations that are included in CIP are Milford Mill Academy Boiler, Church Lane Elementary Roof Replacement, Deer Park Middle Roof Replacement, Timber Grove Elementary Roof Replacement, Milford Mill Academy Roof Replacement, Pikeville Middle Chiller, Goings Mills High School Electrical, Randallstown High School Roof, Newtown Elementary Chiller. Next slide. So this is for the central area. Elementary school, two of the 23 schools are over 100%. No elementary schools exceeded 115%. So in terms of capacity utilization, the picture in north, in the, in the central area is a lot better than some of the other areas that I just shared with you. Secondary schools, two middle schools exceeded 100%. No middle school succeeded 115%. And Towson High is, is the biggest school for concern, which is 130%. Next slide, please. So Towson High and Delaney are replacement schools included in our plan that we are presenting to you. Systemic renovation for central area include Lock Raven High School, Boiler and Chiller, Ridge Ruxton Chiller, and Pinewood Elementary School Mechanical and Roof Replacement. Slide, please. Northeast area, 11 of the 22 schools exceeded 100%. So this has been focused in the elementary schools for quite some time. Two schools exceeded 115%. Relief was provided with the opening of new Honey Go and Victory Villa Elementary Schools. An additional relief will be provided with the new Northeast Elementary School and new Red House Run Elementary School. The new Northeast will provide all new seats, and Red House will be adding seats when we replace that school. In the area of secondary school, Perry Hall, Goldring, and Rivers River Middle School exceeded 100%. So we still have capacity concerns in the middle school area in the northeast side. Overly Parkville and Perry Hall High Schools exceed 100%. Next slide, please. So the planning study is going to review or recommend options for the northeast area high school. The systemic renovation that's included in, in CIP is right in front of you here. Fire Norm for Perry Hall, Joppa View Elementary School, Fire Norm, Parkville High, Borver, Essex Elementary School Chiller, Rosedale Center Roof, and Martin Boulevard Elementary School Chiller. Next slide, please. So this is for the southeast area. Over 100% capacity utilization. Deep Creek Elementary School exceeded 115%. Relief provided with the opening of Berkshire, Colgate, and Dundalk. So a lot of effort has been made in the southeast area in the elementary school side. Secondary school, Dundalk and Sparrows Point Middle School exceed 100%. Three of the four high schools exceed 100%. Dundalk and Sparrows Point High Schools exceeded 115% utilization. Next slide, please. So in order to resolve some of those issues in our request here, there is an addition for Dundalk High School that is included. Planning study will help us identify options and actions that have to be taken in the southeast area for high schools. And systemic renovation included for the southeast area is Battle Monument Roof and Mechanical, Jessup Peak High HVAC, Jessup Peak Terrace Elementary School Chiller, Charles Mount Roof, Logan Elementary School Chiller. Next slide, please. So this is, this is the equity assessment part of the slide. Projects included in our CIP will benefit socially vulnerable areas as defined by Baltimore County Government, which refers to the potential negative effects on communities caused by external stresses on human health. Such stresses include natural or human-caused disasters, disease outbreaks, reducing social vulnerability can decrease both human suffering and economic loss. So as you will see, the pink areas are the socially vulnerable areas, and the dots that you see there, the purple and the green and the blue, they significantly help us in the socially vulnerable areas. Next slide, please. At the area of environment and sustainability, we are very pleased to announce that one of the schools included in this presentation under CIP for 2023, Deer Park is being designed as the first net zero school in Baltimore County. So this will be the first elementary school in the state. It should be net zero. And there are two other schools, Dundalk-Sowers Point and Dundalk Elementary School. Both have received, they are already completed, and they have received gold certification, which is quite an achievement in the sustainability area. All, all of the other new and replacement schools built since 2010 meet or exceed silver certification. That's about 12 schools. Energy consumption reduced by utilizing renewable energy sources. Projects comply with all state and local environmental regulations. And schools are community-centered, multipurpose facilities. We have increased our use of renewable energy sources. Next slide, please. So that marks the end of our prepared presentation. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer that.
You, Mr. Dick?
Sorry.
Yeah, the, the two questions. One, I'm a little confused by the Towson High School in Delaney. I thought that there were still plans to review that for renovation versus new school. And what is going on with the high school that was in the southeast that was rated the highest on the Board for Needs for Improvements that we had from the MYIPAS? And then I guess my second question is, what are you doing? Or what has been done to the schools to help prepare them for, you know, COVID, and, you know, so we can get schools open fully and they're not being closed? Those would be the two questions I have.
So I'll try to answer that, and Dr. Williams, feel free to add if you want to add anything. The Towson and Delaney High Schools, they were initially recommended for replacement, for renovation addition. Our board voted for replacement of those schools. And the county government has supported school board's action, and the request has been submitted to state for their consideration. Now Towson is a historical building, so it will go through the historical evaluation process by the county's Landmark Commission and also by Maryland Historical Trust. So that's a community-driven process, and we'll be presenting different options to communities to comment. And once the consensus is achieved, then further recommendations will be made. On the southeast side, the study that I shared with you is going to be undertaken. It's already started. And hopefully, we'll come up with the recommendations, and that'll be included in future capital plans. I think the final question you had about what has been done in terms of, to assist with the COVID mitigation, and we have done several things there. We have looked at our ventilation systems, made sure that they are all functioning as designed. We have increased our filter change frequencies. We have increased our filter change frequencies. We are spending additional resources in making sure that ventilation systems are functioning. And if we ever receive a request for ventilation issues, we are giving high priorities. And lot of federal grants have been used to purchase air purifiers to supplement existing ventilation system.
Could I make a few comments?
Sure.
So thank you, Mr. Dixon and Dr. Williams. I really appreciate the information. And I'm a new member of the planning board. So some of my comments are gonna be related to helping the planning, my fellow planning board members know who I am. And then I have some concerns as a representative of the fifth district. I've got a bunch of dogs in this hunt. Grew up in Dundalk. So the, the information about adding to Dundalk High School is of interest to me. My grandson is a student at Sparrow's Point High School in the Magnet Program there, the Species Program, which is a fantastic program. And as you know, the facility there needs upgrading. As a member of the fifth district planning board, I've got a bunch of concerns. So I was the principal of Perry Hall Elementary. I was the principal of Victory Villa Elementary. I was the principal of Pine Grove Elementary. And for the last twenty-two years, I've been an employee at Towson University. My major concern in these comments is the overcrowding at, at both Perry Hall Middle and Perry Hall High School. And anybody that has watched the news in the last week knows that there have been some real concerning issues at Perry Hall High School. I live in Perry Hall. My daughter is a graduate of Perry Hall High School. And I have to tell you that when the lead news story on the news is for two, two days in a row are the fights at Perry Hall High School, which I don't think is a good represented, representation of the community in which I live and where my daughter graduated and a community that I care deeply about is a representation of who we really are in Perry Hall and in the fifth district. I believe that one of the challenges and as my, in my background as a, an administrator in Baltimore County and an educator for the last fifty-plus years, I know that, that's the faculty and the, and the administration at Perry Hall High School is rock solid. And they, the challenges that they have every day is directly related to, and I don't know what the exact enrollment is at Perry Hall High School, but I think it's around twenty-six hundred. My grandson went to Perry Hall Middle. I think they were over two, it was over two thousand ten. None of that is anybody's fault. It's just a reality of the, the situation with population and enrollment and so forth. And eventually I'm going to get to a question. What are we doing to relieve the overcrowding in the Perry Hall Schools? Given that when I drive down around the police precinct in Perry Hall, I see a huge amount of construction. So I know that there's a new elementary school that's going to open. I know that a new middle school is going to open. But also see continued huge construction. So are any of those schools that are struggling now because they are overcrowded? And the, the fighting that has occurred at Perry Hall High School, I believe, is probably a direct result of that overcrowding. What are we really doing in reality? It all sounds good. Okay, we have two new schools in Perry Hall. First of all, the elementary school that's, that's going to open it, I think the zip code is two-one-two-three-seven, which is Rosedale and not Perry Hall. And I believe the plan is to close Golden Ring Middle School when the new middle school is built on King Avenue. So are we really relieving overcrowding in these schools? When I was principal of Perry at Pine Grove Middle, we had twelve hundred kids. That's a lot of adolescents to manage. And we worked really hard every day to create a safe and orderly learning environment for those kids. But as long as the schools continue to be overcrowded and as long as we continue to allow development, it, it's a Band-Aid. It's, it's not going to help. So I guess my question is, as far as the high school, I've heard that there's land off of forty-three that maybe is going to be used to build a new high school over there. What are we doing to help all of this overcrowding?
So let me try to answer some of the questions. Before I start, thank you for your service to, to schools as educator. And when you talk about Perry Hall, you talk about an area that's very close to my heart. I'm father of two kids that went to Perry Hall Elementary, Middle, High School and went on to achieve their dreams. So I'm very much familiar with a lot of things that you're talking about. We have built several schools in the northeast part to relieve the elementary school capacity situation. Once the northeast area elementary school is constructed and, and Red House Run is constructed, indirectly they all impact the old crowding situation because we'll go through a redistricting process to make sure that it's all balanced out. The schools that we have built are state-of-the-art twenty-fourth century school with modern educational facilities. And if you ever get a chance, we invite you to visit Honey Go Elementary and the next one that's coming. On the middle school side, you are absolutely right. There is overcrowding. So one of the things we are doing is building that northeast area middle school, providing fifteen hundred some seats. And even after you take the Golden Ring population there, there'll be several hundred seats, new seats available in the northeast area middle school. Pine Grove that you are familiar with, and you know the internal architecture of that. Pine Grove is going to go through a major renovation, which is going to change all of the inside part of the building. And so we'll be able to use at least four hundred more seats, some by just configuring, configuring and some by adding classrooms. So with the construction.
Your Dixon, so does that mean that the capacity of Pine Grove will, when you say four hundred? And, and first of all, thank, thanks for that positive feedback. I appreciate it. And I know your kids got a good education in Perry Hall. Listen, the overcrowding, we did a pretty darn good job of creating a good educational environment. So I appreciate that comment. But so at Pine Grove, will the capacity go from twelve hundred to sixteen hundred?
So Pine Grove, the official SRC was more than what you actually could have accommodated there. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but the actual capacity, let's say, was twelve hundred. We could only put thousand kids due to the manner in which it was reconfigured. So what this renovation will do is number one, it will get you to the capacity that it was designed for, plus add another two hundred seats. So round about anywhere from three hundred to four hundred additional kids that'll be accommodated in there. In case of northeast area middle school, we'll take whatever nine hundred kids or whatever those kids, or maybe eleven hundred kids from, from Golden Ring. I think it's nine hundred. And then it's a fifteen hundred kid school. So that's another five, six hundred new seats. So once these projects are completed and we go through the redistricting process, we believe that most of the overcrowding will be taken care of. I have with me my Director of Planning, Strategic Planning, Mr. Taylor, if you know of any numbers or if you, if you want to add to my response, feel free to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. I was trying to look up the data. I was able to find that the current SRC of Pine Grove Middle School is one thousand one hundred ninety-seven. And the, the plan is to increase that. But I don't have the exact number of the increase.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for Dr. Williams and also Pete. My first eight years out of Maryland, I taught physical education and coached various sports. The majority, during the school day, the students are sitting or really inactive, sitting at their desk and so on. And at the end of the school day, that pent-up hormones are going to go in two, one of two ways. Something positive or something negative. And there are equal amount of hours that are spent after school, which could be put into a positive event. Now at Hereford High School, when it was renovated, instead of spending a hundred and twenty million dollars to build a new school, they spent under fifty million to renovate the existing school and they were two million under budget. During that time, they neglected to realize that when they went from junior senior to senior high school, the massive increase in the number of people that were participating in after-school activities. And they act, they did not have the space. They even closed made classrooms out of one of the existing gym and did not make the new gym any bigger to accommodate this. So the fact is that we do not have the space to, Hereford also has one of the biggest after-school activities of participation of students in the county. And it's about ten miles, fifteen miles to the borders that the students have to travel. So it's been very important for the last five years ago, we started asking for a additional gym space next to the existing gym where there is a space available without very minimum amount of clearing. And this would help to address both the school needs and the after-school needs of the community as far as recreation and so on. So the, when we're talking about hundreds of million dollars of replacing schools and we're talking about less than two million to address a mistake that was made when the Hereford was renovated, I think we need to address this. And it has not been addressed in school. The county has ignored our requests from the planning board. Now the other thing, well, anyway, might, might address that first. Then I have one other question.
So thank you for your advocacy, Mr. McGinnis. I know you have talked about this before also. And we try to, to design schools based on the program. And at the time, the educational program was, the design was done, the educational program indicated the need for gym and other facility. We can always revisit that in future. As you know, our needs far exceeds the available resources. So when or the time will come and we have resources available to take care of those needs, we'll definitely review it. And that's the best I can share.
Students at Hereford, when they leave the school at the end of the school day, can't walk down the block and participate in some recreation facility. They're kind of, it's a little unique situation. And I think it's been, it's been ignored for too long. And as I say, there's a lot of kids up there that want to do the right thing and not get involved in something not so good. And one other question is, about five years ago, a group of parents decided that the existing, a barn on the site, which was an historic barn, needed renovation. They had an offer of for thirty-five thousand dollars to put a new roof and fix this barn up. And they had a donation from local people to cover all the expenses. Well, once the county got involved, they said, oh, well, we need a hundred thousand dollars for engineering. Well, I don't think there's any engineering firm or the county that have ever renovated a barn. And it's entirely different. It's out of their lane. Well, this has gone on for five years. We even had state money put up. And the bureaucracy has been unbelievable to fix a simple farm, barn that has been on the site for, for a hundred years maybe. So I just, it just bothers me that it takes so long and it's just so dragged out. If there isn't some place or somebody in the county that has the authority to address something is not normally covered in the, in any building of, of the county nature. So that, that kind of bothers me. And I think you're very, very aware of the situation.
Mr. Dixon, I have a question. So first of all, I want to thank you and, and Dr. Williams, this administration for committing to a new Towson and Delaney. In terms of middle schools, what, if any steps are being taken to address overcrowding at Dunbar and Middle, including looking at schools that are under capacity like Pine Wood?
So based on what we have so far, the, the priority at this time is the middle school in the northeast side. And from all the numbers we have, and there is not a middle school, if I remember right, of capacity problem in the central area. And once these additional seats are provided and once the redistricting is done, hopefully there'll be some relief in the fringe area of the northeast side that'll help middle school also on the central side. That's the best I can share with you. Middle school in the central area, as I indicated in our presentation, do not appear to have that level of issue that we have in the northeast side.
All right, understood. Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Dixie, for Red House Run, I know that it's been replaced because of asbestos and that the students have been moved to a location on Old Philadelphia Road. What timeframe are you looking at to replace this school?
So Red House Run, let me see. Share with you the best I have. We we have just awarded the contract. So the end of twenty-three, I believe, is what our target date is. So it's not too far. I hate to project a date in this, in this time when there are capacity on the supply chain issues. But we are not too far away from that now.
Thank you. Yes, Pete, roughly December of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Mr. Dixon, this is Kathy Wolfson from District Four. So I've got a couple of questions. I see you have a CTE center proposed for Northwest. Is, is that complimentary to the proposed steam center proposed for Greens Lane and Oak Court Road? Or that, that area? And where is it proposed to be constructed? Will that occupy an existing space? Will Baltimore County buy new ground for that?
Those are very good questions and I wish I could answer you as definitely as I could the other questions. So the study is going to be undertaken. The purpose of the study is to look at the needs. So the issue on that side has been that there has not been access to the programs at the level as they are in the other parts of the county. So we are going to study what programs are the issue? Where is this, where are the seats available, if any? And do we need another piece of property? Or can we use another vacant building that we already have? So if you give us some more time, hopefully when we come next time to you, we'll be able to share more of that information. So I, I do want to thank Dr. Williams here for guiding. So I do want to thank Dr. Williams here for guiding us and making this a reality because we've been thinking about it for so, so long. And finally, County Executive has funding for that study.
So, so do I understand correctly that the STEAM center and the center, the CTE center wouldn't be, wouldn't occupy the same space, even going vertically?
I don't have the answer to that question. In my mind, the CTE center is going to be for CTE and not for STEAM. But what the study finds, if they believe that it can be put together or maybe it is in several different buildings, that's what we'll bring to you for your comments. And all of these studies are community. There'll be tremendous community outreach and community members will participate in that, in those studies.
Thank you. And I was surprised to hear that Dundalk needs, senior needs, a high school needs in addition. When was that? You know, it was a brand-new school, isn't it?
Absolutely. So that area is, is just, there is tremendous growth in population. So even after the addition is built, there'll still be another hundred seats or so projected. That'll be beyond that. And Southeast Area Study will help us determine as what kind of redistricting we can do so that now we can't go any beyond that. The capacity for Dundalk will be full. It just so happened that the initial design had the flexibility of adding another part without, without in a negative way impacting the aesthetics of that beautiful design. So we are taking advantage of that. But even if we do, even if we need more seats after that, that's what the study will indicate. But Tavsko has the same issue too. They need more, they need more space. And Sparrow's Point have their own unique situation where the high school and middle school are in the same building. So all of that is going to be looked at during the Southeast Area Study, and hopefully we'll come up with good options.
And Kathy, could I add a comment to that? I think, first of all, what they, my alma mater is Dundalk High School. And I've been to the, the new building, and I have to say, I was blown away by what they did there. It's fabulous. However, a lot of schools in Baltimore County are, when they open, they're already overcrowded. That is not the fault of the school system by any means. It's the, it really is on how we handle allowing development where maybe it shouldn't be. But it, and I think that's going to happen in Perry Hall. It makes me crazy when I think about trying to manage a school. You know, everybody, the, the, the very bottom line is that when you put your kid on the school bus every day, you expect them to come back at the end of the day, safe and sound. But when we have these overcrowded schools, you know, and I think about, when I was Principal at Pine Grove, our capacity was twelve hundred. And, you know, Mr. Dixon, bless his heart, is telling us how they're going to increase the capacity of these schools. That is not a solution. It's a solution we're probably going to have to live with. But when we had twelve hundred at Pine Grove, we think about it, twelve hundred young adolescents that move seven times a day in, in the hallways, that is darn hard to manage. And I have to tell you, when I retired in two thousand, I retired, this is going to sound crazy, but that's when Columbine happened. And one of the reasons that I retired is because I had a kid that threatened to kill a teacher. And I didn't want my mother to read my name in the, on the front page of the sun paper because I had something horrible happen at Pine Grove. So, you know, you have these huge school buildings, Perry Hall Middle, twenty-two hundred kids. Again, not the fault of the school system. Administrators and teachers do the best they can. But in Baltimore County, we have allowed this development to get out of control. And it, you know, eventually lands on the doorstep of the schools and we...
Bev, I agree, but the thing is, is they can't do anything about that. We probably have to handle that in a different meeting.
Yes, I, I realize that, Nancy. I'm just...
No, 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 I, I understand your frustration, but...
Yeah, I'm just giving, I guess, a reality check here.
Thank you.
Nancy, I have one more question for Mr. Dixon. Mr. Dixon, you're talking about...
Before we move off this, I'd like to, I think it varies depending upon where you are. I, you know, the Perry Hall, the northeast side has seen a lot of developments like that. The, the situation in Dundalk, there has not been that much development. I mean, the development that's occurred has often taken out more housing than it's put in. But we do have, though, the Baltimore County has a really, you know, has a story. In recent years, it's had a very old population. We've had a lot of elderly. As those communities, as those people move out and new families move in, you now get a dimmer dynamic in places like Dundalk, Sparrow's Point, Towson, et cetera. How we handle that? I mean, if you're, to the extent that we do sort of linear projections of, of what the school-age population is going to be, you're going to get these discrepancies between, between, you know, what you had and what you thought you were going to have. So, I mean, I think there, I think there was a lot of complicating factors here that I agree we should be getting into. But, but I don't think it's just the result of overdevelopment. That is certainly one issue, but I think it varies depending upon what part of the county you're in. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Arie.
Scott, Mr. Dixon, I would say, and Dr. Williams, I would say that I'm really happy that our county keeps growing. We don't want a declining population in the county. So in another way, I'm extremely happy that people are coming to the county. We are growing. Now, Mr. Dixon, you did talk about redistricting. Now, when new schools are built, at what point do you make an assessment if it is required for redistricting?
So, Mr. Taylor, I'm going to ask for your help because it falls into your area and you can do a much better job. So Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. With regard to redistricting and the decision to do redistricting, we actually do make that decision at the time that we are conceiving a capital project. So if we're going to increase the capacity of a building, or build a new building with a larger capacity, we already start, we immediately start planning for a redistricting. We actually conduct the study closer to the time when the school is being built so that we can implement the new boundaries right after it opens. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
And I know, I know we're in a time constraint here, but I just wanted, and we're, you know, we should wrap this up. I just want to say that, bringing this full circle, what I heard Mr. Dixon say is that he has two kids who graduated from Baltimore County schools that are doing really well. And I think we should keep that in mind. A good school system.
It is a good, I'd like to make a comment if you, thank you. I'm very grateful to hear that you're taking measures to keep schools open because I run a Chamber of Commerce with three hundred and fifty businesses, but I also chair a group of all the chambers and business groups throughout Baltimore County. And especially for the lower-income families, when elementary schools are closed, it is, it's just a terrible burden on them. So I know construction is important, but keeping the schools open, when I know, understand safety is first and foremost priority, but we, we really need to do that as, as often as we can.
If I may respond, I want to thank Ms. Hefford and definitely our former principal, Ms. German, and the work that you've done. Keep in mind, the pandemic has caused us to respond in certain ways. We tried our best to keep schools open. A lot of it was the operation when we had staff out. And so we made some decisions. And what you're seeing in certain pockets of our school district, the trauma that many of our students are experiencing and how they respond to each other, some of this conflict. So I do understand about the overcrowding. But in addition, there's also this conflict that folks, students don't necessarily know how to resolve conflict. And so some of those things were happening at the schools that you mentioned. And our research and our psychologists are talking about just the trauma that many of our students experienced with the pandemic and how they're responding. So I just wanted to put that in there. We do recognize the overcrowding. But in addition to that is what our staff and students are experiencing with us still in the pandemic and trying to keep schools open. There are times we had to close just because of the operations. But we know our kids need face-to-face instruction. And then, you know, these schools that are being designed nowadays are so in the twenty-first century, and the educational opportunities that we provide to our students are phenomenal. So I appreciate the comments and the questions that were raised this, this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Dr. Williams, I have one additional question you really didn't get an answer to. Because of the unique situation of Hereford, has there any consideration being to giving, to addressing the need for expansion of our indoor facilities at Hereford High School?
So I'll let Pete answer. The facility, we work with our principals regarding programming and regarding after-school activities. And if there's the interest and we can get a sponsor. I know, Pete, you want to respond about the facility. I know that was raised last year.
So at this time, there are no plans for any school to add gym. We have so many needs to, to, to find seats, build seats, that we just don't have enough funding for that. Having said that, we can always look at it for future. So when the funding is available and when there are other things that we can do, or for example, for a long, long time, our schools were not air-conditioned. And there was an initiative, and we started air-conditioning buildings, and all the buildings are air-conditioned. For a long time, there were not enough support for preventive maintenance program for ventilation systems. And we are getting more and more funds for that, and we are taking care of that. So we are always optimistic that more resources will be available to do some of the things that our students deserve and they need to get it. So we'll keep that in mind. And that's the best statement I can make at this time.
Yeah, I'm aware the squeaking wheel gets the grease, and I'm going to kick back for you. So, thank you, anyway.
Yeah, we have done a lot of good work at Hereford High School. We are really proud of that school, the student body, the faculty and the principal there. And the renovation was an extremely successful project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Thank you, Dr. Williams. And thanks to the rest of the, the school system staff for your presentation tonight. We now like to turn to the, the higher ed. I would like to introduce Dr. Sandra Curtinidas from the Community Colleges of Baltimore County and her staff to begin their presentation.
We can't hear you.
I can't hear or see anyone.
He's on mute. There you go.
Okay. Can you see us now?
Yes, thank you.
You can hear us?
Yes.
Good, okay. Well, thank you. Good evening. We always appreciate this opportunity to come and spend a little time with you to give you a sense of not only what our needs are, but really what a terrific resource the community colleges for the work that is done throughout the county. So I do have some slides, but they are not appearing.
Can we put up the slides?
All right. You can see...
We are seeing you, but not the slides.
All right, give us, give us one more minute here.
The joys of modern technology.
Yes, we thought we had this all ready for our turn.
There you go.
Okay. Oh, you can see us and the slide, right? Wonderful, thank you. Well, we're, we're always happy to come and, and talk a little bit about the community college, our needs, of course, but also what we try to give back to the county. So I am here with Vice President Hop. She and I will do the presentation, but we've got our team sitting here in case we have questions that are harder for either one of us to answer. So I'm going to sort of, my part of this program is usually geared to giving a glimpse of some of the good work that we are doing. And I would start with this little cartoon. I know everybody, every single one of us has had way more than our Charlie Brown moments over these past two years. But what I really want to underscore for you is that... We're not clicking. Can you advance the slide, please? There we go. What I want to just reinforce for you, and we've shared this with you each time we've spoken to you now through the pandemic, that it is your community college that has been one of the few two- and four-year community colleges that can say we've been up since, we've been open since June of 2020, serving our students who need us to be. But what you can see up there is a really tight expression of the strategies, the safety protocols that we have built to be able to have stayed open. It's a highly effective regimen of safety protocols that really has enabled us to serve students on-site right up to the present moment. And right now, we're doing about fifty percent of our classes on-site and fifty percent of our classes remote. But I think the important ingredient here is that because we have built such a tight set of these safety protocols, we have had a remarkably low rate of infection somewhere, maybe in the range of twenty combination of employees and staff per week. And that is saying something when you have three thousand employees and forty-five thousand students. So we're very proud of the work that our folks did. Vice President Hop actually has been leading her team through this, calm, cautious. We've done everything we can to make sure people could study, work and learn here safely, either remotely or on-site. I also want to, next slide, please. I also want to... I want to, sure. Can we click there? Yeah, there we go. You know, we have many, many partnerships with the county, and this is one we're particularly proud of. We opened the Job Network program finally on our Essex campus. We've been partners with the county on Job Network for, for, gosh, about twenty years. And they've been in substandard quarters for most of that time. But we had a wonderful celebration, bringing Job Network, which actually serves around three, four thousand students a year. Any, any student who, or any, any participant in the counties, what is essentially the old welfare program, must participate in three months of education and training at the community college. So that's a big program. Another, please. But I also wanted, those of you who are from the west side of the county... But I also wanted, those of you who are from the west side of the county. Uh, I hope you're pleased to know another partnership that's coming into being. The Catonsville Historical Society. Has decided they no longer will exist as a separate society. And they said, they have selected the college, uh, to become the curator of all of their archives and artifacts. Uh, what, as you may know, our historic mansion and now we have an historic marker program. But we're really proud to now become the, um, now take on the legacy of the society that's been in place for a long time. But slide please. But the place where I, I think we really look to you to be of great. Uh, uh, and, and meaningful assistance to us. And you heard the, we heard the superintendent. Uh, talking about 21st century schools. And this is our mantra, 21st century college for 21st century students for 21st century jobs. And what that means is that the capital support and the operating support of. The, the county is immensely important in our ability to serve and support the county's needs. So I wanted to show you, you know, we now, we've had six sites and county support. For facility improvement has been significant, but this year we, we've added another, our new little. Uh, baby is our, is our site at Trade Point Atlantic. Now. You know, we, we, what you hear from us as we come to speak to you about our capital needs is. Uh, built on a slow, steady march from campus, all three campuses, one at a time. Either new construction or renovation. And our two campuses, Essex and Catonsville are now about 65 years old. Dundalk is maybe pushing 50. And so these are not bad ages for people. This is my standard phrase with you. But it, they're terrible ages for buildings. So we're here to add to this slow and steady progression. Of tra- of campus transformation. But before we do that, I, I want to do something a little different. Um, our college had some pretty significant national not- notoriety, uh, not that long ago. And some of you may have seen, as we added our Trade Point Atlantic site. As the home of our CDL Truck Driver Training Program. Uh, the, um, it was Nora O'Donnell who came out to the Trade Point site. And interviewed our, uh, faculty and our students. Now, I know that the county is. Uh, very strong on its equity goal and also it's, is very strong on its needs for workforce development. So as you watch this little clip, I want you to think about your community college on national news. And how firmly we fit into the county's road to economic recovery. Going to come right through our front door and that's in sync with our equity agenda and the county's. And if you would please. Press the button.
Is there supposed to be sound?
Yes. Oh.
There's no sound.
Up, please restore it. I apologize.
You might have to restart it. There you go. No sound.
No sound.
Or it's not coming through the system.
Up it and then let's. Is there something more we can do on our end? Give us just one minute. This is a pretty powerful, um, presentation that illustrates. Just remarkably well, how CCBC is not only. Uh, important to the county in terms of what we're doing for the workforce development needs, but also. For the, uh, ability that we have now to support the, the, the neediest. Of our residents in terms of, of just amazing training opportunities. Try it one more, and if not, we'll just pass it by.
No sound.
Sound. All right. Let's just stop.
And Dr. Curtinitis, make sure you just send this to us and we can upload it to the website so that, um, others can see it as well.
Oh, yes, thank you. I do appreciate that. I, I hope maybe some of you had seen it on the evening news. But there's a very poignant, uh, uh, conversation near the end where Nora is talking to. One of our, uh, soon-to-be graduates of the truck driving program. Now. What's important here is that, uh, you know, the, the college doesn't tell the world what we think they need. We listen to what the industry needs are. And truck driver training is number one. On the list of family sustaining occupations. And so through this short video. What you can see very clearly is here's your community college reaching out to meet an industry need. Your community college planting itself right in the middle of the industrial section of Trade Point. And again, we're grateful to the county for having been very helpful in our being able to do that. But the young woman who is interviewed towards the end, a young African-American woman. And she, she has her, her dreads and, and her big hat on, but, but what she says at the end is very powerful. She said, with a, with a catch in her voice. I'm really hoping to have a job by Christmas. And she didn't get her job by Christmas. But two weeks ago, that young woman, La- Latisha Gardner is her name, uh, was hired by Pepsi. To drive their big trucks for $23 an hour. And in her little interview, she acknowledges how she has never had a job. She has four children, is a family. Never had a job that paid above minimum wage. So I, I, I want you to, uh, we will send it and I, I ask you to take a look at it. Because it just brings together what this slide suggests. That our education agenda is an economic agenda and our equity agenda, which I'll, I'll just talk about briefly in a minute. Uh, both very powerful connected links, uh, that really spreads across this entire county. And you know, we're also very proud of the fact that while everybody is in need. Of nurses, we just graduated December to January, we just grad- graduated 150 more. LPNs and ADNs. And at the end of this semester, we will graduate another 150 more. So we don't just use words like this, education agenda is an economic agenda. Uh, this is, this is our mantra, this is us. So, uh, if you would click one more, please, to the next slide. I want to just give a context to how we, we think we fulfill, uh, as strongly as possible. The county's equity agenda because it certainly is ours and, uh, we live, we live it every single day. So you can see from this chart, the vulnerable community residents. And if you look at the circle of. 82% of CCBC students, Baltimore County students, living in vulnerable and underserved communities. Next slide, please. And this next slide will show you from last year. We're always, we can capture data, uh, one, only one year, one year behind. But if you look at what you see up there, and we show you this data every year and it doesn't change a whole lot. But notice average age of CCBC students, 34. Always for decades, more women than men. Notice now we are a minority-majority institution. Largest of those minorities, of course, about 37th, uh, percent, uh, African-American. But then there's a growing number of Hispanic, a growing number of Asian, and then a growing number of other, uh, other minorities as well. And that ties in closely with 89% of our students enrolling on a part-time basis. And that tells you a whole lot about who are CCB students. Many of them people with full-time jobs and families and taking one class or two classes at a time. And there's no shame in that. So we're very aware of what we do. In terms of the students that we serve. And one of the things we're proudest of, and I'm glad to say we used, we were able to use. Uh, a good bit of stimulus money to be able to do this, but we launched two years ago as the COVID pandemic began. A CCBC tuition-free program. And notice how many students, 85% of CCBC students. Both last year and this year are receiving full or partial scholarships. And if you couple this with the chart I just showed you, and you, you just, you just have to feel as we do, I hope. Really proud of the fact that we're the community college, we're, we're the place where people who would otherwise have no opportunity. To advance, we're the place that they can do that. Slide please. And so the consequence in terms of what this brings to the county, the return on investment, you can see right here in this slide. Every year, it's about 13,000 students who achieve something important to them. But because our enrollment was, was down last year, it's still pretty significant. 45,000 students, 11,000 of them achieved something important to them. And the real number that's important to return on investment, 95% of those graduates will remain to live and work. Right here in the Baltimore region and most of them right here in Baltimore County. So I'm going to do one more slide. We know also that sustainability is one of the county's goals. And as you can see from, uh, this, this slide, CCBC is all about. Uh, sustainability in our capital projects. And we're, we, we're winning awards and we're, we're just doing everything we can. And I give, uh, Vice President Hop and her team a lot of credit for that. So if you click the next slide. I'm going to pass the presentation, the substantive presentation over to Vice President Hop.
Thank you, Dr. Curtinitis. And, um, and I'm just gonna start with, uh, reminding everyone. That CCBC is a big place. Uh, we have, uh, 1.8 million gross square feet. Across our three campuses and three extension centers. I didn't add the, uh, the, uh, small facility at Randallstown, so, so add another couple thousand feet to, uh. To that. What we do throughout our capital budget is work to leverage. The investment that Baltimore County makes. We do that to secure matching funds with the state. About 50%, um, federal funds and philanthropic funds. Additionally, the college, uh, pays the, its debt service and our students. Generate about a million dollars a year in, uh, student fees. You know that we work hard to build cost-effective and sustainable facilities. The one, uh, the one thing that I'm going to share, you saw our new Center for Health Professions the last couple of years. And, uh, we don't, uh, we don't have it signed down the dotted line, but, uh, we are very hopeful that we'll receive. Gold lead certification for that facility. Next slide. So we come to you today with, um, two, two topics. First, of course, the appropriation for fiscal year 23. Um, we're not seeking any additional county funding, but we are, uh, seeking appropriation. Of, uh, state capital funds and the student fees. What's really more important for us is what's in the 24, 25 biennium that goes to the voters this November. We're seeking $22.6 million of, uh, county bonds. That is 4.1 million higher than the target provided to us by the Office of Budget and Finance. What, but we think that it's particularly important because there's a project for the Student Services Center. At CCBC Catonsville that, uh, needs to be done. It's very important to student support. And that, uh, by itself would actually exceed the $18.5 million target. So we need that. And, um, during the Eustace Center project. We had to reduce the amount of funding for deferred maintenance to keep within the target level. And so we're really asking to go back up to that $6 million per biennium. Which is really a million dollars per campus per year. And there's a lot more detail on that deferred maintenance in the, uh, in the packet that we sent over. So I hope you have a chance to see it. Next slide, please. This shares with you that it's, it's not all that unreasonable. Um, you see just a little while ago, we had an average of 26.6, uh, per biennium. So 22.6 doesn't seem, uh, that far out of line with where we have been historically. Next slide. You always ask us to tell you about projects in progress and we're happy to do so. I'll start, uh, in the corner. There are new, uh, maintenance facility at CCBC Dundalk. Is almost complete. I think we're about 30 days away from the certificate of occupancy. So, uh, we are very grateful for, uh, for that facility. The one that we are close, uh, the CCBC Essex renovation in addition, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. That we, uh, we hope to begin, uh, construction towards the end of this spring. And then we're just, uh, entering design for the underground piping loop at CCBC Essex. Next slide, please. So this summarizes the 23 capital budget request. You see the local funds, which is the student capital fees. And then, uh, $4 million that we are slated to receive from the state. That matches funds previously, uh, provided by the county. Next slide. So here's the new, uh, Essex Wellness and Athletic Center renovation. So we add on, um, what you see here, the addition, which is the new, uh, fitness center. And if you flip the slide, you'll see it's a new, uh, fitness center. Um, dance studios on the upper level of the gymnasium. Some, uh, lobby renovations to improve the circulation path. And something that is, uh, very, uh, exciting for us, an outdoor classroom. For, um, for all of our, uh, disciplines. So you see the prior funding. This is the million dollars of, um, uh, capital fees and then 2 million from the state. So that equals the total $13 million project. For the biennium, uh, it's a total budget of, uh, $40.8 million. And then of course, uh, 22.6 of that is from the county. I'll go through the highlights of that in these next slides. First, is this a vital project to us? You see the Catonsville Student Services Center. That was, um, originally bit, built, um, I think about 60, 62 years ago. Um, so that facility is where students are advised. Students are tested, students are registered. Um, it's, uh, where the Career Services Center is. And then the downstairs serves as sort of the student union, which is woefully undersized. Uh, for the number of students that we, that we have. Um, vastly, uh, undersized. And so what ends up happening is. And so what ends up happening is it's a, it's a loud, noisy place where students get no, not a good experience at all. There is an opportunity, this is kind of looking at the site to the corner, and you see here, an old wall and the Tudor House, some of the historic ruins on our Catonsville campus. And there's an opportunity here for us to create several outdoor classrooms adjacent to the ruins as part of this construction project. So it's a total of $15.9 million in local funds and the same in state funds. The next project is at CCBC Dundalk. Several years ago, about six years ago, you funded the renovation of the first floor of the Student Services Building. This is the renovation of the second floor. And while I've shown a picture of the offices that need some reconfiguration, really, the second floor renovation is about exciting things like air handling units, energy efficient lighting, new fire alarms, sprinklers, and windows and a and a roof. So it's a $6.5 million project, half of which would be paid for by the state. Slide. You were very generous in supporting the replacement of the electrical switchgear at CCBC Catonsville, a project that we finished, I guess, it'd be two years ago now. And it's now time to replace the electrical switchgear that is the the main electrical distribution and energy system for the entire campus. We would start with design in the 2425 biennium and replacement in the biennium thereafter. Also included in this biennium are roof replacements. These roofs have reached, have actually exceeded their useful life, and I need to be replaced. There are several on each campus. Next slide, please. And then lastly, we've given you some example of the capital maintenance, project $100 that we're seeking for our deferred maintenance, aging infrastructure, heating, cooling, repaving, et cetera. This, this shows you a chart of how much we have devoted to deferred maintenance. And you see, we tried in the 2013 or 1213 biennium to get up to $6 million. We've kept it up between $5 and $6 million, except for the last three years, when we needed that funding to stay within target and complete the Eustace Center. So now we're at, we're seeking $6 million again, to to tackle that $58 million in deferred maintenance. The final project, and very modest, some ADA alterations and asbestos abatement. Of course, these are bulk categories. We have some existing funds, so this just kind of adds to it a little bit each biennium. The bigger project is storm water management, $2 million. And that's, of course, because we need, these buildings were built before, and the campuses were built before we cared about storm water management, and before we worried about the health of of the bay. So our goal is to match the compliance timeline and deal with 20% of the issues every two years. So this $2 million will go towards that. I can talk about the 87 million in the SIP beyond, in the capital improvement plan beyond that, but I really, we really wanted to highlight the 2425 biennium. And that concludes our our presentation. We're, of course, available for plenty of questions, and we appreciate your continued support.
Thank you, as always, for your presentation. Sorry, we didn't get to hear Nora O'Donnell, but I'm sure we can find it online. Before I open up the other questions, I do have a quick question. The deferred maintenance, at your current pace, will you ever finish?
No. The answer would be no. Yes.
Other questions for Dr. Kurt Nitis, Ms. Hop?
Yeah, this is Todd Warren. As always, I think this is the greatest value the county gets is the community college. So I appreciate all you're doing. I guess I have two basic questions. In the past, the county had not fully funded to get the state match. Is that still the situation? Or are you getting the full, the full match?
Right. So the state matches 50%. The challenge has been, and I think this is what you're recalling, we've had to sprag projects so that we had sufficient match to to get the state dollars. So we didn't go forward until we had the state match, but we delayed, you know, the the Eustace Center was actually funded over three bienniums. When, in truth, we would have, we would have preferred one biennium or or two. And so that is really the challenge that we share when we look at the CCBC Catonsville Student Services renovation. We're trying to do all of that in one biennium. And that's why we're requesting the additional 4 million.
And my second question's kind of a question and an ask. So I've been, become very involved with the Manufacturers Association here in Maryland. And there's a huge need. I love what you did with the trucking facility. That's awesome. But there's a huge shortage of manufacturing employment or employees to fill the the needs we have in the county. And I I guess what I thought was a regional, you know, technical institute that could be a manufacturing hub. I know in the past, you had some manufacturing, you taught some welding and whatnot. I don't know if that's still going on. But it would be wonderful, as I think you guys run one of the best programs that I've ever seen. I would love to see you guys head up a regional manufacturing hub or education center that would do so much for the manufacturing community here in Baltimore County and the region. So I guess that's a question slash ask.
Okay, I'd like to respond because you're exactly right about the the need for a regional hub. There have been several efforts at creating that. You may recall, maybe five, six years ago, there was an effort at Towson to become the regional hub. We're very closely connected to Mike Gallozo's RMI Regional Manufacturing Institute. And we do a good deal of manufacturing training. But but let me, let me just share a wonderful, surprising good news story that occurred last week in relation to educating and training more manufacturing employees. On Wednesday last week, I received a call from Mike Gallozo saying, you're going to get a call from, and he told me the name of the person, it didn't have much resonance with me, but shortly thereafter, a gentleman called, he identified himself as the, as one of the key leaders in the foundation of a large company called Exometry. Perhaps you even know Exometry, but he was calling me to say, we want to give you a half million dollars to train manufacturing employees. And he wanted to send the check the very next day. So you're right about the fact that we have a reputation and we have capacity. And truly, what we, we couldn't take the check the very next day. I wanted our advancement people to develop a proposal that would, you know, show him what we would be able to do with this half million dollars. But you know, that's, that's both, I think, a a credit to the reputation of our manufacturing program, and also a recognition of the need, just as with truck drivers. You're right about that analogy, manufacturing employees. And this is, this is high level, high tech manufacturing. And people kind of forget that manufacturing has advanced significantly over the past decades. And it isn't just about what we used to think about manufacturing. So we're, we would love to be in this, even in a bigger way.
Thank you, and I hope that I can be part of helping that be done. So.
Well, you can. Would you like to write another check for a half million dollars and send it to me tomorrow?
I don't quite have that, but if I if I can do something else, I'll be glad to.
Okay.
Never hurts to ask. Other questions?
I'm just reminded that in reality, and I'm an employer as well, that there really is no unskilled labor. You know, every job takes some level of competence. And I think it's just terrific that you're doing the trade point, the truck training at TradePoint. I mean, you're really close to the to the terminals there. And, you know, if you want to become a truck driver and have to pay to go to truck school, that's going to be between $5 and $10,000. And I'm assuming there's a real component of your programs that are in driver and road safety. And I just, you know, if you do this as well as you do everybody else, everything else, I think, you know, you're really giving people a real big, big head start, not just financially.
Well, thank you for that. And let me, let me share with you that through our tuition free program, in the cohort that was interviewed for the CBS special, there were, I think, about 15 or 17 students. And almost every one of them had a tuition free scholarship for the $5,000 fee. And just a little aside about that particular cohort, young woman I noted before, Latisha Gardner, who is the one who, when you see the the little news reel, you'll she, you'll, you'll, she's just perfect for, you know, here she is, a little truck driver. But her sister was also in this cohort. And these two women intend not only to get their truck driver license, which they now have, they are going to buy their own rig and go into business for themselves. Isn't that special? Wonderful. We, we all play a role in that. We do, you do. I mean, it's just amazing to me what can happen.
Thank you.
Dr. Kurt Nitis, you are truly a unicorn.
I'm sorry. Should I be happy with that description?
Absolutely. I mean, you listen to the needs of the community, and and then you help people find opportunities. So we are so grateful to have you and your amazing staff.
Thank you very much. We, we, we feel good about coming to this meeting because we, we know you'll believe us when we say we are a value, we add significant value to the county. And you've been helpful and supportive. And maybe we haven't always gotten all that we wanted, but we're really grateful for what we get. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna think of myself as a unicorn. Thank you for that image.
Other questions? Well, hearing none, I again will echo what the the other board members have said. We thank you very much. It's always great to to hear what you're doing. I know I was telling my wife the other day, I miss going out and seeing the some of the different programs in person. That was always one of the real treats of of this process. So so maybe next.
Okay. Well, thank you. Be generous, and we'll wait for the next step.
Thank you very much. That concludes our presentations for tonight. The Planning Board will hear staff recommendations immediately following our meeting on Thursday, February 17. Information for that meeting can be found on the Planning Board's webpage. I want to thank the planning staff for all of their work and for sitting through all of these meetings with us and preparing the material. And I want to thank the members of the Planning Board who have, we've had, had a busy couple of weeks. With that, I want to call this meeting adjourned unless anybody has any final comments. We'll see you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you.